World Call of Aldermen.
Heisler.
Here.
Consol.
Here.
Meyer.
Here.
Hall.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Rodgewitz.
Here.
Carpenter.
Here.
Hart.
Here.
Sillsby.
Here.
Hayden. Seibert.
Here.
Martinson.
Here.
Elmore. Schneider.
Here.
I'm sorry. Schneider.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Okay. Musgrove.
Here.
Arlen.
Here.
I'm sure those two towns will show up in a second. A roll call of department heads.
Please Chief Flight. Archie Blanksen.
Here.
Mike Fliss.
Here.
Ken Vaughn.
Here.
Boris Palio.
Here.
Amy Matrick.
Here.
Tim Redwoods.
Here.
Jim Schneider.
Here.
Andrew Spearman.
Here.
Emily Foltz.
Here.
Chuck Shaver.
Here.
Bob Sabal.
Here.
Chief Play is excused. He was off today. Ladies and gentlemen, at this time, we have Boy Scout Troop 13 from Faith Church in O'Fallon, and they're here in a great number tonight working their assistant shift in community planning. And I would ask that they would, one or a few of them come forward and lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Would you please all stand?
Scouts salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. To.
Melvin, thank you. Best of luck as we continue to work on your eagle. As we talked a little earlier, that's quite an accomplishment. And it looks like there's several of you getting closer as I look at your franked eagle. So keep up the good work and get those mandatory merit badges as soon as you can. Okay, at this time, we have no public hearings this evening on open public participation. Any who would like to address the city council this evening, please step up if you'd like to apply. Gary Nauman, Andrews, try to keep your mark for two or three minutes, if at all possible. Yes, sir.
Rick Brown, Sec. 32 Pennsylvania Avenue, Level 11.
You're going to hear or you're going to vote tonight on six cases of zoning board appeals. You're only going to approve two of them. I know that already. You know, I believe in the bottom of my heart that the legal department in this city is absolutely corrupt in the way that it has gotten to the Economic Development Planning and Zoning Department in order to use the zoning ordinance to take people's property in violation of the Constitution of the United States. You know, one of the cases in particular at North Jackson Street, the property was zoned, multifamily. There's a dwelling sitting there that has three apartments in it. It was properly zoned. It has fairly new heating and cooling equipment in there. Looks like ninety, ninety-five percent equipment, efficient furnaces and air conditioning systems, hundred amp up-to-code electrical systems. And with one vote tonight, you are going to eliminate one-third of that piece of property. Now, I believe that that is a taking in violation of the Fourteenth Amendment to the United States Constitution. The city has done it hundreds, if not thousands, of times. Now, you want people to move into this city. You want people to bring businesses to this city. And when this city steals property from people in that manner without paying them enough compensation or giving them due process of law, you're not going to get it. This city will go right down the toilet. Thank you.
Anyone else this evening who'd like to speak? Yes, sir.
Michael Hackberg, 701 Centerville. I'd like to make a correction that was made at last meeting about TIPS. Last year, the library's levy request was $1,185,000. They received $1,185,417.50 because of penny rounding. Having TIPS or not having TIPS does not change the overall amount the library collects. The library board of review sets a levy request, and this is the amount that is collected from the taxpayers. If all TIPS were to go away and the library requested $1,185,000, they would still collect $1,185,417.50. TIPS III does not take money away from the library. Second item. On tonight's agenda, Seventeen F, there's no company name mentioned in the hiring of this legal firm. By nominating the name to the public, we have no chance to know if there are any campaign contributions behind this. We don't know if somebody's brother-in-law works for the firm. We're just kept in the dark. And it's too late to raise concerns if you tell us now what the name of the company is. It should have been released long ago to the public, what company you're hiring. I would ask my aldermen to make a motion to table this item until they are properly informed and able to make the decision that will be in the best interest of the taxpayers. Thank you.
Anyone else this evening? Hearing, now, of closed public participation, this time, we will, we have the privilege this evening to ask Darryl Coons, he asked Jim Schneider and I, if he could come forward and deal with the character word of the month piece. Robert Coons.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Address you and the Board of Aldermen and everyone who's here. First of all, I want to just say that it's Dave Martinson's fault that I'm here. Probably the best thing that ever happened to me was eleven years ago when he asked me to be the fire chaplain for Belleville. As I looked at the word for this month, the character word, peace, I have to tell you that I wrote about six sermons preparing, thinking of all the ways I could tell you about all the mistakes that I've made down through the years in not living in harmony with those around me and working with those around me. Then this morning, I looked at the word once again on the nice little poster that we have from the Basic Initiative, and it struck me as never before that we're talking about living in harmony. My bachelor's degree is in music education, and over the years, that has cropped up several times. One of the things that is really interesting about music is that it is most beautiful and most pleasing to the ear when it is harmony. We love doing barbershop harmonies and hearing symphony orchestras that play wonderful harmonies. Occasionally, in a piece of music, there will be a dissonance, a sound that just doesn't quite seem like it ought to be there, and it almost makes us cringe. What works out best is when that dissonance resolves back into harmony. When we're working in the community and when we're working in our families, there are times when we have dissonance. There are times when we don't agree about everything. In the past, I've handled that in entirely the wrong way. I grew up at a time when we watched all the war movies and television that taught us the way to peace was by beating somebody down. But that's not always the way to peace. And telling people, because I said so, is not always the way to peace. I'd probably still be a pastor if I had been a little bit more peaceful. So I recognize tonight that there is always going to be the dissonance. But I would encourage all of us who are gathered here, and it's great to see these scouts here, to learn to find a way to disagree and then to resolve into harmony once again. I think the city of Belleville will become much stronger when we all become citizens of character and we learn to live in harmony with each other. Thank you.
Darryl, you also going to, you got the chair and Jim Davian?
Sure.
Since my voice is fading, I'd ask Jim, Darryl's also going to read the proclamation I signed for 2012 National Alzheimer's Disease Awareness Month.
And I thought about changing my name tag for that, but I thank you for letting me have the honor during this. I work for the Alzheimer's Association.
That's why I think Jim thought he was only kidding.
Yeah. Here is the proclamation. Whereas Alzheimer's disease, the sixth leading cause of death in the United States and the only cause of death among the top ten in the country that cannot be prevented, cured, or even slowed, is a public health crisis causing hardship and heartbreak to a great many people, families, caregivers, and communities, including the city of Belleville. And whereas 210,000 people afflicted by Alzheimer's disease reside in Illinois, and whereas 5.4 million Americans are now living with Alzheimer's disease with one additional person diagnosed every 68 seconds, and whereas the Alzheimer's Association is the world leader in Alzheimer's care, support, and research through whose efforts diagnostic tools are becoming more accurate, treatments more effective, and a cure more promising, and whereas the Alzheimer's Association is encouraging our residents to participate in the National Alzheimer's Disease Awareness Month throughout the month of November by creating awareness, fundraising, volunteering, or donating at www.alzheimers.org/sdl. And whereas the city council of Belleville wishes to show its support for the goals and work of the Alzheimer's Association by encouraging learning about Alzheimer's and taking action to end Alzheimer's. Now therefore, I, Mark W. Eckert, Mayor of the City of Belleville, Illinois, do hereby proclaim November 2012 as National Alzheimer's Disease Awareness Month in the city of Belleville, Illinois, asking its citizens to join in the observance in witness whereof I have heretofore set my hand and caused the seal of the city of Belleville to be affixed this fifth day of November 2012.
Darryl, thank you for reading that. And to all of us, I think, unfortunately, I think we all, in recent years, unfortunately, probably no more than one person, family, affected. And it's become pretty, pretty much a major concern throughout the region. And so certainly to pay some focus to this and certainly do what we can to care for those families who are dealing with people with this terrible disease. It really does affect a lot of people in quality of life. So.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you for what you do.
And could I just say that as the Illinois Outreach Coordinator, if any of you have any questions, if you have a group that would like to hear about Alzheimer's, if you have a family member and need some assistance, give me a call. I'll be right here in Belleville and work out at my home office for this.
Thanks, Darryl. Appreciate it very much. Okay, at this time, we're going to go onto the regular part of the meeting. I'd ask for a motion to approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting held October 15, 2012. What's your pleasure?
Your Honor, I'd like to make the motion to approve the file of the minutes of October 15, 2012 meeting.
I'll second that. We got a motion by Alderman Heisler, second by Alderman Consol. Alderman, yes.
On page five, under item number six, put the ad, what we were talking about zoning does not apply to the attorney houses, strictly authorized by the authorities.
Yeah, we, it's, we're talking about the Lindenwood zoning with the, what a handle was, attorney houses.
I specifically asked a question, Mr. Blanksen, but this does not apply to the attorney houses. Is what I did to regard that?
Okay. So, we have accepted.
Okay. And one other thing, on page nine, under the discussion about the library, I would like to note that Mr. Spearman did say that all of the taxes, the tax increase that the library went to salaries cases.
Yeah, is that sound correct with your statement? You guys also agree with that, those two additions? Hearing those two corrections, additions to the minutes, we got a motion and a second. There's no further discussion. All in favor of accepting the motion with those corrections as stated, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Claims may be void of dispersals.
Your Honor, I move to have the claims table and the dispersals be paid.
We got a motion by Alderman, second by Alderman Heisler. Any discussion about the claims? Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Consol.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Hall.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Rodgewitz.
Aye.
Carpenter.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Martinson.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Arlen.
Motion carries. They ask for a motion to approve and accept the city attorney's report dated October 19, 2012.
Okay.
Motion by Alderman Mar, Mayor's second. Second. Second by Alderman Seibert.
Do we have some questions about their part?
You can ask.
Okay. Mr. Lynn, of these two dozen properties you've got listed, how many of them are still active? Because I know some of them have already been demolished.
They're all active. The question is whether or not they're still before or after demolition. Some of them are before demolition, some of them are before closure or demolition.
Okay. Do you have a guess about proportions of?
Give it to me.
Okay. And so what is, what is the delay after a property has been delayed? Why is it still on the, has been demolished? Why is it still on an active list?
Because the case file is still open with the fore款.
Yet they don't pay us the demolition, we go after the property.
Okay.
You foreload the demolition lien, the same proceeding, and the case file is still open.
Okay. And so of that kind of case, do we ever get paid?
Sometimes. Very seldom sometimes.
Yeah. Somebody gets able to let the property go on then and not be.
There's a few cases where people wanted the property, so they paid for the demolition.
There are a couple of cases where we've been able to collect them with efficiency. Not with efficiency itself, but something that costs them a certain price.
And is this something that could drag out for years?
No, there's been a couple that lasted a little bit longer with no kind of extended period of time.
Okay. And of the properties that come to you for demolition, how much more, I don't understand the process, how they get to you?
In the housing department.
Okay. The housing department has carefully checked everything, done whatever.
They send me all the reports, they send out the notices, and I get all the copy and all the files.
Okay. How many of these properties do you think are going into court over a long time?
All of them.
And do you ever tell people that are going to be charged for that by the city?
Sometimes they appear, sometimes they don't appear.
Okay. And how, how does that work? Does the city actually bill?
If, if there is someone to bill, we can collect from the, do that. It's rare that we find someone called to bill it.
Okay. So where are we billing for? City services or your time? How is that?
It would be billing for my time and cost that had been incurred by the city.
Okay. You're a salaried employee, so how do we arrive at what we're.
I keep track of time, these individual files, and that I present to the court a petition based upon what our firm's hourly rate would be if we were handling it on an hourly basis.
Okay. So then it's a court decision.
And that's approved by the court.
Okay. All right. Can you then tell me, I noticed on the Bucky's case, there was recent activity. Can you catch up on that?
Well, the city's motion for partial summary judgment was granted. That motion for partial summary judgment was based upon the fact that they were asked to have a car wash week. Part of it would be approved. And you might recall that when they filed, they didn't actually pass for the car wash. So that has been stricken through their request, so they would not be allowed under any circumstances to have a car wash.
Okay. So.
The issue still remains as to whether or not they can do anything. All of the other issues.
So do you see this as a positive for the city as a whole?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And so what's going to happen next on the case?
It's a separate status hearing in January. The next step really will be up to the plaintiffs as to whether or not they want to proceed with the case based upon this ruling by the court.
May I ask him to speak into the microphone?
I'm sorry.
Sorry.
I guess we're having a private conversation.
Okay. And the last question, I know this isn't a huge, and maybe Mr. Mayor, you can tell us, what is the status of the one on the corner on East Main and Hole?
It was in court approximately 10 days ago, 10 days, two weeks, less than that. And Attorney Julie Brooke talked to me this week and indicated that we should hear something according to the judge, and then, when she told me that the other day, she thought within another 10 days or so, we should have a ruling.
Okay.
So I'm waiting to hear. I'm hoping by mid-November would be what she told me. So hope to have a ruling. Okay?
Okay.
Any other questions? We have a motion and a second to approve the city attorney's report dated October 19, 2012. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Zoning Board of Appeals advisory reports.
Case number 63, Julie Fernandez, requesting a used variance in order to be changed by 16-foot steel storage shed containing in the front of 501 South First Street for 80 feet in a D1 light industry zoning district. Zoning Board requests to be approved.
Your Honor, the zoning board ID is set at June 13.
And that was the deadline, right, Alderman? That they have to be removed by then?
Yes.
So that's, should be included in the motion, Mrs. Seibert?
Yes, sir.
So you're approving, you're making a motion, but to understand that the deadline for removing these is June 1, 2013.
Monday, Thursday, yes.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Martinson. Do I hear discussion? Yes, ma'am.
Is it 16-foot or 18-foot of the trailers? I was in zoning and I thought it was 16.
I don't, I don't know.
I was under the impression it was 16 feet, but the applicants here, maybe they can clarify that?
I mean, just so our wording is right here, because I also had 18 months highlighted, but.
Can we know the length of the trailers, ladies?
12 foot long.
Are they party foot long?
12 by 16.
12 by 16.
Party by 16, okay. Party by 16.
And will they be allowed to renew to have this, to this purpose?
One question. Sorry.
Sorry. Will they be able to renew this if this is for business purposes?
It's not, it's not for business purposes, it's for personal storage purposes. And they wanted to have them there past June 1, 2013. If that's approved tonight, they would come back and reapply to the zoning board.
And can I add that the applicant stated 95% of what's in these trailers, she's going to throw away anyway. She's already had eight months of them sitting there.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second.
When, when, June 1 comes, and they're still there, what? Should they apply before June 1, if they want an extension, or?
Yes, the deadline for them removed is June 1, so they're not out by June 1. My understanding, this could go back to court.
So they need to know that.
Yes.
If they don't do that, they'd be in violation of the ordinance, so you can file a ticket, issue a ticket against them or file a lawsuit against them for the removal.
I feel like I want to wear those couple of masks for something easy.
Those masks are for the trash, right? We'll take care of that. Give them a, I saw this weekend. Chuck reminded me tomorrow to tell you that. Okay, we have a motion and a second to, I guess, uphold the recommendation, but noting that it's June 1, 2013 is the deadline for removal of case number 63. All in favor of this motion and have the proper ordinance drawn, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Case number 64, John Wright, requesting a used variance in order to operate a natural care in a dreadlocked business, has a home occupation at 7506 West Main Street in a C1 light commercial zoning district. Zoning Board of Appeals request be approved.
Your Honor, I would accept the, make a motion that we accept the recommendation of the zoning board and have a proper ordinance drawn.
Motion by Alderman Musgrove, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Second by Alderman Arlen, do I hear discussion? All in favor of approving case number 64 and have the proper ordinance drawn, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Case number 65, Luke Allen, Still Water Preparation, requesting a used variance in order to utilize an existing duplex that has been vacant for more than one year at 813 Centerville Avenue located in an A1 single-family zoning district. Zoning Board of Appeals request be denied.
Your Honor, I move that we concur with the zoning board and deny this request.
Motion by Alderman Hayden to deny, second by Alderman Sillsby, concurring with the zoning board on case number 65. Any discussion? All in favor of denial, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Case number 66, Patrick Boss and Nancy Schulte, requesting an area of old variance in order to utilize the properties at 6, 8, and 10 South Turn Street as two single-family dwellings located in a C2 heavy commercial zoning district. Both dwellings are located on one lot that is less than required minimum of 10,000 square feet. Zoning Board of Appeals request be approved.
I move to apply and have the proper ordinance drawn.
Motion by Alderman Seibert, second by Alderman Martinson, to approve case number 66 and have the proper ordinance drawn. All in favor of this motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Case number 67, BNS Land Trust, Samantha Gorman, requesting a used variance in order to use the property at 216 and 218 North Jackson Street as a three-family dwelling in an A1 single-family residential zoning district. Zoning Board of Appeals request be approved with stipulations.
I move to comply with the recommendation of the zoning board and have the proper ordinance drawn.
Okay, there are stipulations with this only?
It says in the name of applicant, have the name applied only.
Okay, we have a second on this motion.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, a motion by Alderman Mar, second by Alderman Seibert. In the name applicant only, would that be his main only stipulation?
Yes, that would be the only one.
Okay, this is for case number 67. Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion and have the proper ordinance drawn, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Case number 68, Kurt Smith, Wadivers, requesting a sign installation permit for the area of special people in order to install a 19.33 total square feet of flush mounted timber signage at 7506 West Main Street located in a C2 heavy commercial zoning district. Zoning Board of Appeals request be granted.
I comply with the recommendation. The zoning board, have proper ordinance drawn.
Thank you. Motion by Alderman Mar, second by Alderman Carpenter, to approve case number 68 and have the proper ordinance drawn. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. More reports, Alderman Anderson.
Yes, Your Honor, you have the Master's Service Committee to make a motion to approve the Log-Trend Control Plan to strike the pay request number 28 according to John and the total amount of $1,116,696.75. And I salute.
Motion by Alderman Anderson, second by Alderman Hayden, to approve that request coming from Master's Service. Any discussion on that? Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Consol.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Hall.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Rodgewitz.
Aye.
Carpenter.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
Martinson.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Arlen.
Motion carries. Ask for a motion to approve an amendment to the execution agreement between the city of Belleville and Carol J. Schneider, Stephen K. Thomas, Leslie Thomas Ellison, Michelle Thomas Ward, and Mary Thomas Robillard for Bell Valley 3 Industrial Park. Do I hear a motion?
Oh, Your Honor.
Motion by Alderman Seibert, do I hear a second? Second by Alderman Martinson. Any discussion?
Could you just kind of give us some background?
This is the agreement we have with these folks to develop and sell the property that they own the farm to be turned into Bell Valley 3. We have not, we're working towards making a plan, committing hopefully some money in this next budget, we're going to hope, will be the proposal, to start the infrastructure so that we can have lots available to continue so that we can have lots available to continue to grow the industrial park. We've got sections one and two, I guess, Eric, just about totally full, right?
Yeah, there's, there's only one unsold lot there, and this will, uh, basically find your extension if they disagree.
And they're agreeable?
They're agreeable.
They've already signed, they've already signed the...
Right. They, they signed it, it's just an extension to what we started, we, for a little bit of history, a number of years ago, we had a grant from the state of Illinois to put the road through there, and then we were approved the grant, but it was never funded. So that's where the slop started, where the money dried up from the state, uh, the 1.5 billion we were supposed to get for the tire plasm extension, when that money never developed. We, we've been faced with each year now, and then we kind of waited until we got Royce's, where's Royce at? Till we got the sewer through there, and got all that worked out, so now that's all done. Uh, so we're now poised really to start looking at how we would develop that, lay that out. And if I'm not mistaken, I guess we're in the process of gonna, we're gonna re, we, we had some more stuff to put into it, right? That was important.
We're gonna reissue our request for qualifications.
Right, till they off the plaque in this, in this third edition, so that'll be coming probably in, what, January, probably December, January?
Yeah, since.
So, okay, so that's where we're at, it's just been a slow process, but they're all agreeing, so this vote tonight to say, uh, approval tonight will give us a chance to keep working forward, with which I think is very important to continue to develop Belle Valley, Belle Valley 3, the industrial park. So we have a motion, we have a second, and ask for a roll call, vote.
Heisler?
Aye.
Consilla?
Aye.
Meyer?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Rudowitz?
Aye.
Carpenter?
Aye.
Hart?
Aye.
Sillsby?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Cyber?
Aye.
Martinson?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Schneider?
Aye.
Musgrove?
Aye.
Arlet?
Motion carries. I ask for a motion to approve a solicitor's license request for Paul R. Peterson to solicit an insulation program through Ameren, Illinois, Act 1 Energy. Do I hear a motion? Motion, Alderman Rudowitz, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Martinson, do I hear discussion? All in favor of the motion to signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries. I ask for a motion to approve a listener's license request for Paul R. Peterson to solicit an insulation program through Ameren, Illinois, Act 1 Energy. Do I hear a motion? Motion, Alderman Rudowitz, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Martinson, do I hear discussion? All in favor of the motion to signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries. I ask for a motion to approve request for permission from the city council to allow that we would, um, host the, uh, business after hours that have low alcohol depresses for the Belle, for these, um, cities' business after hours with the Chamber of Commerce for the, uh, Christmas after hours, which would be hosted December 6th, 2012, from 5:00 until 7:00 PM at 5:10 West Main Street.
Summer.
Motion, Alderman Meyer, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Cyber, discussion?
Are we, are we the host, or are we just providing the venue?
We work with the Chamber, they've given us, since we're basically the Chamber's biggest member of these days, they always ask that person if they want the December business after hours. So it's kind of a partnership to do it with the Chamber, I guess is the best way.
Okay, who's, who's buying?
Who's buying?
Who's, who's providing the alcohol, who's providing the depresses?
The, the Chamber will work out, they rotate different, uh, people who have alcohol licenses who get a special use permit to come in and provide it, and they'll get somebody, everybody pays, everybody pays their, pay your own rates, whatever.
Okay, yeah, that's...
Yeah, as soon as that, we're not having, we're not... There's no free drinks.
Didn't take one of them.
So, sorry. Before it changes, we have a motion in second to approve this event. Uh, roll call.
Heisler?
Aye.
Consilla?
Aye.
Meyer?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Rudowitz?
Aye.
Carpenter?
Aye.
Hart?
Aye.
Sillsby?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Cyber?
Aye.
Martinson?
Aye.
Schneider?
Aye.
Musgrove?
Aye.
Arlet?
Motion carries. Um, next item, I ask for a motion on behalf of the Board of Police and Fire Commissioners to hire Brian Gregory, a proportionary fireman, to fill the vacancy for a former retired. Motion, Alderman Sillsby, second, Alderman Cyber, discussion, roll call.
Heisler?
Aye.
Consilla?
Aye.
Meyer?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Rudowitz?
Aye.
Carpenter?
Aye.
Hart?
Aye.
Sillsby?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Cyber?
Aye.
Martinson?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Schneider?
Aye.
Musgrove?
Aye.
Arlet?
Motion carries. I ask for a motion on behalf of police and fire commissioners to promote firefighter Joseph Laird to engineer to, uh, to fill a vacancy from a retired. Motion, Alderman Sillsby, second, Alderman Heisler, discussion, roll call.
Heisler?
Aye.
Consilla?
Aye.
Meyer?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Rudowitz?
Aye.
Carpenter?
Aye.
Hart?
Aye.
Sillsby?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Cyber?
Aye.
Martinson?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Schneider?
Aye.
Musgrove?
Aye.
Arlet?
Motion carries. Communications.
Communication request from St. Clark County Department of Preservation Commission requesting permission to have Woodland Court closed to through traffic for their candlelight house tour on Sunday, December 9, 2012, from 1:00 PM until 7:00 PM.
Motion, Alderman Fire, second. Second, Alderman Rudowitz, do I hear discussion? All in favor of that request, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries.
Resolution number 3117, a resolution transfer to community development.
Do I hear a second? Motion to approve, Alderman Sillsby, do I hear a second? Second, Alderman Cyber, that's the resolution 3117, transferring three involved block grant funds.
Question?
Yes.
Did I recall, did this go for finance?
The CBG grants never go for finance.
Yeah, the gate right here.
This is in a budget amendment in the city's budget, since it's an amendment to our CBG grant.
Yeah, it's, it's not a mention, it's not a amendment to our budget, it's amendment to the, to the agreement we have with the county. Does that make sense?
Makes sense, you just, you're, I think, removing, you know, $270,000 dollars to at least go to some kind of legislative discussion.
Eric, have we, in the past, have we ever, have anything to differ?
No, I mean, this, we've done several of these in the past, few years, uh, just, another, the reason I ask it, Your Honor, is that these questions could have been addressed with the signings committee.
Do you have a particular question?
Yes, but it's showing here, South 22nd, Washington Street, the very first one, existing balance, 249,019,999, and transferring 100,000 to South 23rd Street, which I understand is a project. Um, what is this existing balance, the remaining existing balance, where is it going? If I'm reading this right, TY 10, is that for the year 2010?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna go back, um, a couple of years, um, before the crime lab got here, or it was all at the time that the crime lab said they were gonna come to Belle Valley, so the city made a, a decision to, to fix, um, 22nd Street, West Washington, and 23rd Street around the crime lab there, because those streets were in bad condition. But in that time, uh, the crime lab, crime lab had a couple delays, um, so it got pushed off a, on a year or two, um, so we still had to use that money. So we started, we scaled down the project, we did one project, it was 22nd and West Washington, that happened a couple of years ago, so we separated that off. And in the next year with the CBG dollars, we made 23rd Street, South 23rd Street, its own project, okay? But we still had those dollars in 22nd, West Washington, and the 23rd Street, fiscal year 10, is what you're looking at, so they, and, and we estimated, um, the whole project, what we thought it was gonna cost. But in the time that we bid 22nd and West Washington, we got good bids. Um, and, and the time that we bid South 23rd Street, it came in way under, so we have extra dollars, and we're just shifting those dollars. We shifted 100,000, I don't have the exact numbers, but 100,000 to South 23rd, and we have South First Street, that's coming up next year, um, to resurface that, new sidewalks, curbs, and what is the?
Mascuda Avenue.
Mascuda Avenue, um, that is...
That's what we're working towards now.
Right, um, there, there's a project there that's in a historic district, um, that we're hoping to get more dollars to, to push towards that. There's still, may not be enough, but we hope, we hope that we can get good bids for the Mascuda Avenue project too. We're just, we're making sure we don't lose any of those dollars, we're shifting them forward in the fiscal years.
So, where, where would I go to ask for a big one-stop name for West Lincoln, see if they could be of shift?
They're gonna get theirs to the TIP, we're, we're proposing that that project's done next year with TIP.
The transfers, the transfers, we need to transfer to existing CBG projects if we go on South Main, and then we have to amend, uh, our CBG budget, we have to reapply actually through those fiscal years, so we, the quickest, the most efficient way to use these funds would be to shift them to existing approved projects.
Right, if we were gonna add South Eighth, South Eighth as a project, um, that would come probably in, um, March or April, when we're asking, um, for CBG dollars to do that project, but those dollars won't come available until November of, of that year, November of 2013, so we couldn't start, you know, designing that project or working on that project until after the, the dollars were appropriated.
We're looking at the, the Lincoln Street from Sartor Avenue to Eighth Street should be a TIP project next spring.
Lincoln and Eighth, that's, that's the plan.
And then Eighth Street, we're still trying to figure out, which, TIP's getting cost estimates, those are two pretty expensive projects, because the sidewalks are all shot, the curbs are all shot, and the road needs to totally be road mill to be done, so those two projects there, we're getting, we're getting there, but you've got, um, our reward over there at the lot streets, and we did 10th, as you know, we did 11th, we did parts of Union, we did State Street, we did Cleveland Avenue, and we're gonna have to look around and see, but we're for sure gonna get, we're sure gonna get Lincoln this year, from, from Sartor Avenue to Eighth Street, that'll get done for sure.
Can I ask, uh, in the future, did they, they send to finance, just so finance committee has an idea of what's going on with these tax funds before they get to the council board?
Yeah, this was, this was, a lot of this was in the budget for us, uh, the plan for last year's, uh, TIP money, etc., and CBG.
I just think, some committee, before we get to council board, you'd be looking at this, and finance committees, and one that protects the first.
I think...
Well, the CBG dollars do not come through, um, the city's finances, it doesn't go through the finance department.
I understand that the finance committee will receive all the city finances.
Okay, let me go back, see, we have a motion now to, uh...
We have a motion in second.
I'll, I'll show it back, I'll move it back.
Oh, 3117, the first one.
3117.
Okay, we have a motion in second, any more questions?
Want some further thought?
Roll call.
Heisler?
Aye.
Consilla?
Aye.
Meyer?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Rudowitz?
Aye.
Carpenter?
Aye.
Hart?
Aye.
Sillsby?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Cyber?
Aye.
Martinson?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Schneider?
Aye.
Musgrove?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Resolution number 3118, a resolution requesting permission from I.D.A. to draw 159 at 100 square at the Santa Claus Parade on November 23, 2012, from 9:00, 3:00 AM until 12:00.
Motion, Alderman Sillsby, second, Alderman Meyer, discussion about the Christmas parade for the resolution.
One quick question for the plate of counsel, are you comfortable with a half million dollars aggregate on the insurance? I, I'm sure that standard has nothing to do with this parade, I'm just saying, is that a little bit outdated?
It might be, it, it might be, but we still have our own insurance, so I don't, I don't practice, the city gets any particular risk or additional exposure.
I was just encouraged, you'd consider maybe updating that with Mary.
We'll look at it. We have a motion, we have a second to approve resolution 3118, roll call.
Heisler?
Aye.
Consilla?
Aye.
Meyer?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Rudowitz?
Aye.
Carpenter?
Aye.
Hart?
Aye.
Sillsby?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Cyber?
Aye.
Martinson?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Schneider?
Aye.
Musgrove?[1576.04]
Second by Alderman Heisler. Do we want to say anything now, is there necessary?
Not unless there's questions.
Is there any questions regarding this? This is the refinancing of the bonds, yes.
Did this one go before the finance?
Yes. Yes.
Over a month ago it went to finance, and there was a motion for some refinancing as long as it was over $30.
Which funds were these, Jamie and?
Series 2005 bonds, they were paying for the street scape, they're being refinanced at more than $10.
Okay, any other comments, questions? Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Rutowitz.
Aye.
Carpenter.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Selsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
Martinson.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Mustrow.
Aye.
Arlen.
Motion carries.
Resolution number 3120, a resolution approving the bond compliance policy and procedure for the City of Bellevole, Illinois.
Motion by Alderman Selsby, second by Alderman. Heisler. Discussion. Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Rutowitz.
Aye.
Carpenter.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Selsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
Martinson.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Mustrow.
Aye.
Arlen.
Motion carries. Artnisses, I ask for a motion to read by title only. Artnisses number 7638, 7640, and 7641. Motion by Alderman Cybert, second by Alderman Consilla. All in favor of reading those three artnisses by title only signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries.
Art number 7638, an artist prohibiting the use of groundwater as portable water supply by insulation or use of portable water supply wells or by any other method.
Motion by Alderman Selsby to approve, second, 638, second by Alderman Heisler, discussion, roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Rutowitz.
Aye.
Carpenter.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Selsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Cybert. Martinson.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Mustrow.
Aye.
Arlen.
Motion carries.
Artniss number 7640, a zoning artist case number 66, Patrick Boss and Nancy Schultz.
Motion by Alderman Selsby, second by Alderman Cybert, discussion. Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Rutowitz.
Aye.
Carpenter.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Selsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
Martinson.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Mustrow.
Aye.
Arlen.
Motion carries.
Artniss number 7641, a zoning artist case number 68, Kurt Stiss, 40 years.
Motion by Alderman Selsby, second by Alderman Meyer. Discussion. Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Olderson.
Aye.
Rutowitz.
Aye.
Carpenter.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Selsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
Martinson.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Mustrow.
Aye.
Motion carries. Miss Lane, is there new business?
Other unfinished business, can we ask you the dating minutes refer that's been reported on, do you believe we're gonna keep that happen?
We've been talking, we talked again Saturday morning, and he and I, Mr. Flynn, are gonna be, he's been in touch with the police chief, I think we're working through this, but he's in the back of the room today, and he's got my word that we're following through and gonna continue to have more dialogue.
Okay, under Miss Lane's, as you know, tomorrow is reelection, and we do have technical city properties that are used for polling places. The way I read the law, if you are at polling place, as long as they are a hundred feet from the entrance to the building, it is possible for candidates to post political signs.
I don't think any signs are our property.
Well, I don't think you have that option, because I think, I'm differing state law, so.
I don't.
I think schools and churches have the option of being a candidate-free zone, but you'll have to let him tell you about whether publicly owned buildings have that option or not.
I would, I would hope that we'd have the ability to not allow that. I think that would be very distasteful for any, any building signs to be on public property.
Well, it says during the hours the polls are open, that is considered a public forum, and to air in, on the side of the community, obviously both parties, which you will want to make. While I'm doing that, I also wanted to ask you, you issued a memo a couple months ago about signs on city right away. Okay, so is your policy for that tomorrow the same? Because I think this law applies to that also.
I don't think people putting up, as they do sometimes, large amounts of signs at daybreak tomorrow all over city property and right away is appropriate.
Well, it's not our opinion to decide, there is a law that covers it.
While he's doing that, John, I would certainly, regardless of what the law is, if it's a sign that's blocking or impeding the right of, it'd be dangerous in a child's handover, I would hopefully remove it.
Well, and we will, I can tell you.
Okay, good.
I will, I can tell you, we're not gonna block vision or view from driveways or anything else. But I just, in my mind, I've not, I've not been aware, and I wish you'd brought this up sooner, but like I said, I never had anybody before, we've had people before flop up signs on election day, different places, we've taken them down. If they're on city property, they have no permission because we don't get behind any candidates.
Oh, I understand that.
So I don't think it's appropriate.
Again, it's not our opinion, it's what the law says, so Mr. Flynn is free to interpret it.
Where are you suggesting that this?
I am suggesting that we not order the street department or the police department to rule any signs tomorrow, that we air on the side of caution.
As I read what you've provided me, and I, and I don't know if this is accurate or if it's current, but what it, what it appears to be, what it appears to be saying is that if there's a public building, and it gets anywhere or not, there's two or more floors, that there are certain designated a hundred horizontal feet from the entrance where nothing can be done, so I, I don't know if these measurements apply to any polling place owned by the city, and how it may affect a city polling place, so I guess I would need to know where the polling place is in question, and then we would make a determination as to how this particular statute may affect that particular polling.
Do you believe the only two city properties are the Nichols Center and the Parks Department on West Lake?
Well, those two are for sure, we don't have any at the firehouse to achieve.
Some firehouses are not, we're getting Bellevole firehouses.
I think this is our only two safe buildings.
And it says the markers shall be placed a hundred horizontal feet from each entrance to polling venue. So I, I don't think it means anything of being placed on the building itself, on our public building.
But can you place it in a parking lot on the edge of your house?
On a city parking lot? No, I don't think so.
Because?
Because it's city property.
But it says for the hours the polls are open, it is public property, it is not private.
I don't, I don't think it says that. And I, I just disagree with you on this. So we, we maintain right of control of that property.
Correct, correct. Absolutely. And, you know, that's something at the state election, election board that we have to learn about before the next election, and we'll have to learn about it, and I think for tomorrow, based on the city terms, lasting interpretation being questioned by this, we're gonna proceed as we have in the past, we're not gonna let anybody come and put signs up on city property tomorrow, if the Marty will take them down. It's not, the city property is neutral property, it's owned by all the citizens, and it's not to be a, a billboard.
I really think the letter of the law that it is public forum, so both sides, all right, but how about electioneering, if there's more than a hundred feet of, of middle?
I think that's between you and the state's attorney and other people who monitor the elections.